Having, I know, shocking. Um, but we're gonna go ahead and, and open the Gladstone School Board City Council Joint Work Session for uh Wednesday, May twenty second at five forty one P M. So, um, we will start with, um, we, you probably have an agenda in front of you. And we'll go ahead and then just go around and introduce the city council and school board members quickly for those of us who don't know one another. And then we have some guests here as well that will be on agenda item number two. So Bob, would you like to start? Okay.
Uh, Bob Stewart, Superintendent of Gladstone School District for thirty seven more days.
Not that anyone's count.
Greg Alexander, Gladstone City Council.
Matt Harkin, School Board.
John Schmarber, Police Department.
Robbie Teague, S R O.
Al Salam, School Board.
Jeremiah Patterson, Assistant Superintendent.
Cindy, uh Tracy Obergrat, School Board.
Michael Milch, Mayor.
Jackie Betts, City Administrator.
Donna Diggs, School Board.
Vanessa Huckabee, City Counselor.
Charlie Chu, School Board.
Luke Roberts, School Board.
School Board. Mindy Gerlington, City Council. And then I want to introduce, uh, behind us here, we have some, um, Orlando Perez and I have been friends for a while. He was on the North Clackamas School Board and Orlando and Laura and Justine are all part of the Oregon City Children's um Center and they're gonna do a presentation with us today and we're very excited to have them. It's a wonderful organization. I've been to a few functions with them, so. Um, I think we have, oh, I lost it. There she is. So I'll let you guys introduce yourselves too. And then, um, and then we have a video presentation as well. Do you guys wanna call like kind of?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, we're all member. Yeah, there we go. And thank you for being here. Glad you're here.
We're very honored to be here. Uh, my name is Laura Sitzlak and I'm the Director of Prevention and Community Engagement for Children's Center. I'm gonna talk a little bit about who we are and what we do, but let me have my colleagues focus themselves too.
Uh, and my name is Justine Kova and I'm at Children's Center and more about what that means.
And, uh, I'm Orlando Perez. Children's Center, Children's Center, Board of Directors and Peter, thank you for helping us.
Okay, so we just have a short presentation and and welcome your questions as I go if you have them. So Children's Center is what's called their Child Advocacy Center and, um, there are, uh, twenty four of them throughout the state of Oregon. Children or Child Advocacy Centers are nationwide. They're in fact even internationally. And they are, um, organizations that were established to support children and families that are experiencing child maltreatment, abuse and neglect and, um, we are, um, a private nonprofit. We've been around for about twenty years, over twenty years. And, um, we were established to really be a place where, um, children and families, when they're involved, um, in an investigation related to child abuse and neglect, where they could come, where services are really wrapped around that child and family. They tell their story one time and, um, all of the service providers that are supporting that investigation and supporting that child. So, um, law enforcement and the district attorney's office and Department of Human Services, if they're involved, they have come to us and to that family. And, uh, so that the child only needs to tell their story one time. Uh, we work in a very trauma-informed way. Uh, and, uh, it really was in response to kind of, uh, poorly coordinated, um, services, uh, for children and families where they had to go and they would tell their story to law enforcement and then to the Department of Human Services. And then they would see a medical provider and things of that nature. So, uh, uh, there, we are part of a multidisciplinary team, which is something required by state law. Um, federal law, okay?
I think it looks different state.
It looks a little different. Okay. I'm new. Here for a year, so that just occurred to me. Um, but we are required by law to coordinate those services and to, we meet frequently with those partners. Um, and again, Children's Center is kind of the hub of that work of this multidisciplinary team. We have a mission to work with the community to end abuse and neglect through assessment, treatment and prevention. And we are working to build a world where all children feel safe, valued and heard. Children's Center provides about five hundred assessments each year. These are very thorough, um, head-to-toe medical exams, um, forensic interviews, again, for that child, when able, a child of an appropriate age anyway, um, would tell their story. Um, we provide family support services that really, um, address the needs of the family. I, I should say the state caregivers who are, um, to, um, do that intervention. And, um, so, and again, they give, um, their interview and all of the service providers come to the Children's Center to kind of support and wrap around that. Something that's really important to know is that, um, children have, um, maximum control of their experience at the Children's Center when they come in. Um, they have experienced, um, unfortunately incidents that take away all of their autonomy. And so we are very thoughtful about, uh, in a trauma-informed way, uh, putting a lot of control back to the hands of the child. So if they're old enough to consent individually, they have to get, give that consent if they're over fifteen individually. But even, um, even if they're younger than that age and a, and a state parent brings them in, that child still really has to sort of agree to be examined. If they're uncomfortable, that doesn't happen. If they are not prepared to talk, um, they are not forced to talk, obviously. So, uh, it's a very trauma-informed approach to doing those assessments. Um, every Child Advocacy Center has that fundamental, uh, uh, role to provide those assessments, um, when there's a concern of abuse and neglect. In addition, many of them, including the Children's Center, provide therapy services. We provide what's called trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, uh, for children, um, and their, and caregivers, um, to support them after, um, this investigation and, um, they, uh, are seen for as long as they need to be seen. Uh, we do not charge for any of our services. The medical services, we do bill for, um, insurance when we can, same with therapy services, but we do not have a limit on like twelve percent. How many children are seen as long as they need to be seen? And so if we exceed, uh, insurance requirements, we make up, um, the balance of that through fundraising and grant writing. And then in addition, prevention, I direct our prevention program, um, it is, um, sort of newly expanded. We have always done a lot of, um, prevention services in the community, most notably, um, a really, um, uh, intensive curriculum around child sexual abuse prevention called Stewards of Children. You may be familiar with it. We do still do that. We've done that for a long time. And in addition, we are growing and providing additional, um, trainings, um, out in the community geared towards parents. We don't, uh, we have some partners who do a lot of work in classrooms and I don't know frankly if, um, in Gladstone, you guys work with Class Women Services that does a curriculum, uh, that's directly, uh, with children in the classroom. Um, but we, our space is really working with parents and caregivers, um, around how to keep kids safe. Um, you can see we, um, the reasons for referral, uh, the ages and, uh, male, female distribution, just some additional statistics. Uh, I will just note that, um, our, our organization is really set up to support particularly, um, and required to do examinations when there are concerns of physical and sexual abuse. We have a higher proportion of that than, uh, is generally the case of incidents of abuse and neglect in, uh, the state of the country. So we serve a very high proportion of that. And you may note that that number exceeds a hundred percent because a lot of kids are presenting the full reasons for. Okay, so we're gonna move on to prevention and community engagement because this is really what we're excited to share. That's obviously a very sobering, uh, sobering topic. That core of our work around assessment and therapy. And what we're here to really talk about is that prevention is possible if our community works together to keep kids safe and to learn about how to, um, uh, create healthy and resilient kids and families. So that's what we're here talking about tonight. Our department mission is to inspire, engage and support our community to be educated advocates to protect children and their well-being. So my colleague Justine's gonna pick it up from here and, uh, but we can all address.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Laura. Um, so yeah, as, as Laura mentioned, it's been a really exciting, like, last year, year and a half of we've kind of expanded our prevention and community engagement department. Um, and I've so enjoyed getting to be a part of that work. And, and so as Laura said, you know, we know that child abuse is preventable and it's not just an individual or family level issue. It's a society issue. And so the solutions then of course have to function at all those levels. We can't just say, oh, parents need to do better or schools need to do better. It takes all of us. And so when we look, um, at kind of what our goals are, we're really kind of looking at each of those levels. Um, so strengthening knowledge and skills, right? Really looking at that caregivers and professionals working with kids need to know, um, like understanding warning signs of abuse, as Laura mentioned, some of our child sexual prevention curriculum, right? Understanding, um, the issues of maltreatment and fostering coalitions and networks, right? Is really about that next community level of how are we working together in partnership with all of the different places and spaces that our kids and families are, um, and bringing everyone together, um, to create shared goals, um, and increase all of our knowledge, but also kind of think about solutions together. Um, and then the leading systems that heal, right, is that next level, that systemic level, thinking about policy, like child and family-friendly policies. Um, and we'll kind of advocacy work at that systems level, um, and also increasing awareness. So April was Child Abuse Prevention Month and we did a lot of engagement in the community, but also just like on social media, right? Kind of sharing messages around prevention and hope and healing, um, and reaching, um, everyone in our community. When we think about prevention, we kind of, there's multiple different levels we can think about, but we're really focused in our prevention department about primary prevention. And that really means working upstream to prevent abuse and maltreatment before it even happens. So as Laura shared, we also provide services that support kids and families after harm has happened. Um, but our prevention department is really focused on, again, getting upstream to prevent harm from happening in the first place. Um, and so the core kind of framework of prevention around abuse and neglect are really these three kind of key points, right? Kids need healthy relationships with peers and with caregivers and with safe adults. Healthy development, right? And adults who can support them if they're not on track developmentally. Um, and safe environments. Uh, and I know I look at this list and think about all of the ways that our schools are providing all of those three, um, kind of core factors. So we talked about the knowledge and skills and Laura mentioned, you know, that we've for many years provided the stewards of children curriculum. Um, but these are some of the other trainings and resources we've kind of been, um, again, increasing our capacity to provide in the community. Um, so again, doing that Children's Center one-on-one, um, a little bit of information like we're offering here today to make sure folks are aware of the resources in the community. Um, and we also have been, um, partnering with folks at the Oregon Department of Human Services to provide in-person mandatory reporting trainings. Um, we know sometimes folks, you know, are required to watch a little video or do a short online training. But we found that that really doesn't get at all of the nuances around what it really means to, um, be a mandatory reporter and when you should call the hotline and what that feels like. Um, we, um, kind of in collaboration with our therapy team, um, have a great training around just understanding the impacts of trauma on kids and what that looks like. Um, our healthy boundaries and behaviors programs and training as part of, um, my work. And that's around kind of increasing our knowledge around child sexual development, um, and making sure we all are prepared to respond appropriately when children exhibit problematic sexual behaviors. Cause we know that kids and teens can engage in sexual behaviors that harm others as well. And we need to kind of understand and provide developmentally appropriate intervention when that happens. Being a Goldilocks caregiver in the digital age is a little bit of what it hopefully sounds like, that, um, digital life is, uh, part of parenting. It's part of educating, right? We live in the digital age and we know that abuse happens online too. Um, and so that really is around increasing knowledge and capacity and skills to support kids in being safe online and, and understanding and building capacity, um, to support kids. Raising resilient children is another one that we've been offering more recently around understanding protective factors and understanding skills that we can, that all parents, all caregivers, all adults who work with kids can help nurturing kids, again, regardless, um, if, if abuse has happened or not. And those skills that help all of us be resilient, um, regardless of kind of what happens in our lives. And I think this is another place where we welcome and want feedback about what other trainings, what other topic areas do you see, um, in your communities, um, that we might be able to offer? Again, as Laura said, we're in this exciting time of having increased capacity and so really wanna be hearing and engaging with our partners, um, around what's needed.
Justine, uh, just speak a little more to that trauma, uh, training and that we're sort of literally today in conversations with uh, the school district about how we could kind of adapt that for, uh, their district and their educators to kind of, uh, go beyond sort of the signs of trauma, but also this, uh, sort of, uh, uh, strategies to address behavioral issues that come up in classrooms.
Yeah, I think exactly that. As Laura said, yeah, we just had a meeting today, um, talking more about that. So I think, you know, it's not just, you know, for folks who are working directly with kids, like we all know, it's not just around the knowledge, but like the skills of in the moment, if you have a kid, you know, exhibiting a challenging behavior that might be part of a trauma response, how do you respond and how do you manage your own response to respond effectively? Um, and we know that relationships, right? We talked about the healthy relationships, like that's where that core component comes in. Um, of being those safe supportive adults, um, who can respond appropriately, um, when those trauma symptoms might be showing up and do show up in the classroom. Um, that next level, the fostering coalitions and networks, one of the things we've been offering, um, gosh, we're like a year and a half now, our quarterly community conversations and connections events. Um, these have been really awesome, um, places and spaces where anyone who cares about kids, um, especially folks who are working with kids, um, come together, have some time for networking and just connection. We always have good food. Um, and then this year we're doing a speaker series, um, of kind of bringing together partners, um, working on these issues in our community. So, um, this is the information for our one coming up in July. Um, we have our partners from the Village for One that's here in Clackamas County, working with children who's, who have experienced commercial sexual exploitation. Um, so they're gonna share a little bit about that topic area and help us all kind of increase our knowledge. Um, about that as well. And then we've got several more kind of upcoming throughout the year, um, with some other exciting topics. So how can you partner with us, right? That's part of the reason we're here. We don't just wanna come kind of talk to you one time, um, but really wanna focus on like what are some of the things that we can offer you and how can we kind of collaborate with folks within the district? Um, so just again, creating, uh, connections with our staff and our programs. Um, we're really looking at having, again, as Laura mentioned, we have those family support schedules to provide support, um, and consultation, um, to caregivers and also professionals when there are concerns. Um, and we can provide that service even for families whose kids don't come in for assessment services. So any parent or caregiver can access that. Um, really making sure that everyone is aware of Children's Center and our services and referring folks, um, to call our intakes, our intake staff, um, if you think it might be an appropriate service for a family. We welcome calls from professionals, but also from caregivers directly themselves. Um, so you can always encourage a concerned caregiver, um, to give us a call. Participating in our community connection series, we would love to invite and would welcome any, um, of you to those events. Um, and then those trainings, right? As we said, we're really excited to have that capacity to come to communities, come to organizations and share, um, the content that we have. And then again, hear from you about what else is missing. Um, and again, welcome your feedback and suggestions. We've got our contact information. And I'm gonna pass it off, I think, to Orlando to wrap us up maybe.
Sure, yeah, um, be quick. Are we able to go back to?
Yes, which line?
Statistics that you had.
Yeah.
Three pages ago. All right, yeah, right there. So, uh, yeah, four hundred ninety-three assessments last year. And, uh, that's just what's reported. There's a lot that's not reported. Um, and you see the breakdown here, forty-nine percent, thirty-three percent, nineteen percent, twenty-five percent. So the CDC came out and said, one out of every ten children is abused. Um, so if you think about that, so Gladstone School District has what, sixteen hundred students, give or take? Yep, so sixteen hundred divided by ten, a hundred sixty students in your school district. This is going on. They're going home in terror every day. So how is, how, as a village, how can we help these kids? Well, some of the tools that, uh, Justine just had up provide things to look for, um, especially those that work with children, our teachers, our staff. Um, especially in these cases, cause a lot of times there's no physical. You gotta look for other things, behavioral, uh, bad grades, what have you. Uh, bad grades when they've been doing good. Uh, so a lot of the trainings, which are only a couple hours. Um, it doesn't have to be with us, any kind of training, so you know what to look for. Otherwise, you got a hundred sixty students, give or take. You're in our school district, our school district that are. So our village, our job is to make that child feel valued. So the sick things or things that are happening to them, they don't have to go home and say, I, I deserve what's happening to me. Or, uh, you know, I guess, I guess this is the way it's supposed to be. It's up to us as a village to recognize something, want to make them feel valued, cherished. So that what happens to them, what happens to them doesn't penetrate their skin and become a, become part of their soul, become part of their story. We wanna, we wanna keep it so it doesn't become part of their story. And that's how we as a village, we arm ourselves with tools to look for those kids that, hey, are you doing okay? I noticed that you're a little off today. Everything okay? There's a lot of times kids, especially at the elementary level, will talk. The last thing I'll say is, uh, someone was once quoted as saying, it is easier to build strong children than to repair broken maps. I believe it was Frederick Douglass. But thank you. This is, it's a dark topic, but it's real. It's happening. It's happening all around us, fortunately. Thank you for having us tonight.
Orlando, can I ask a question? I think when I was with you guys a couple of weeks ago, and just so you know, I, I've bonded a few things up there. Kristin Eaton, who was our school board chair, is also part of, uh, of, a big, big part of this. Um, up there last time, Anetha Hartman was there, um, a representative for Mark Meek was there. So this is a big. Important, I don't wanna say regular, I mean, it is regular. It's, it's just a very, um, well-run organization. If you get a chance to go up and tour, um, it's just right up, uh, well, I'm, not well, all.
Climate.
Uh, Oregon City. So if you get a chance to go, both the one, uh, that I think I remember you guys saying a month ago, whenever I was up there, was that the sexual abuse number is high because that's the one that children acknowledge. I don't know if I heard that, you know, that that's the one that they report the most. It doesn't mean that the other ones are less valued. Did I hear that right? Or there was something about that statistic being so lot, so much larger than the others?
Yeah, and I, yeah, I, I think as Laura said earlier, part of that comes down to kind of the mission and requirements of child advocacy centers being really, um, intended and required to serve those kids. Um, but what we actually see when we look at like the incident, incidents of child maltreatment concerns on a state and national level, that actually neglect, um, is consistently the highest, um, kind of incidence level. Um, but we also know it can be the hardest to identify. Um, and so that's kind of part of, um, again, those numbers about the kids we see don't line up with kind of the statistics about occurrence.
Questions from the city?
Yeah, I have a question about the, um, the professional training.
Yes.
I said, are some of those like, um, so being a Goldilocks caregiver in the digital age, that also seems like something that would be helpful directly to parents. Are, are these like only within a training or are there downloadable resources or things that we could link from our school district website? Or, um, how are these being shared or accessed?
Yeah, great. So I think, um, I would say linking to our website and our prevention and trainings page that we try and keep pretty updated. But I think also what we're finding is, um, you know, we, we sometimes offer trainings that are just open to any community member, right? Folks can sign up and come, but we actually find, I think, that it becomes a lot more meaningful if we're coming to communities that already exist. Um, so we've really been enjoying like going to a P T A and providing that training or partnering with organizations that already have a community and network, um, where everyone can get the same information at the same time and then integrate it into their community. Um, so folks can always also just reach out to that prevention at Children's Center email. Um, if folks are interested in accessing a training, um, and I think you're exactly right, that although it says professionals up there, a lot of these are appropriate for, um, parents and caregivers as well. Would you add anything either?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. That works. Um, so at the beginning of every month, we get a report from all of our department heads, including Chee Schmarber. Um, and I think it was one of my last meetings with Jackie, um, we're seeing increased numbers as far as child abuse. And I'm curious if you guys are also experiencing that and thoughts as to why or patterns you're seeing.
So, I, you know, unfortunately, uh, a lot of this data lacks, so you may be kind of the leading indicator. You're at a local, you know, within your community, you might be getting that information even more than we are. As, as Orlando said, we are seeing the tip of the iceberg of kids that are experiencing this. So, um, our numbers, you know, can fluctuate a little bit. Sometimes we're a little higher than five hundred or what have you, but we're only really being referred kind of a subset, often those kids where there's the most physical impact in conditions. Uh, because there are requirements, uh, there's a lot, partly it's a lot where any kid that's exhibiting a physical symptom needs to be referred for eight hours to provider. So we're kind of seeing this subset and, um, uh, generally speaking, what I understand about statistics are that, um, the black continues to increase over, has been over time and lately, and that physical and sexual abuse, um, are kind of studied, even a slight dip in physical abuse, I've understood, like over a long time span. Um, but those obviously fluctuate kind of year to year for sure. And, uh, I know there were a lot of concerns. I'm sure you folks shared this, um, during, uh, the pandemic that there weren't eyes on kids and places for kids to, uh, people for kids to talk to and engage with. So I, we unfortunately, you know, did see kind of some increase in, uh, disclosures post-probative. So, so it's, I know you're not, you see data as well, but.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. And I think we didn't maybe quite spell it out earlier, but we, we know that child abuse is under-reported, right? So anytime we look at the number of referrals we get or a number of cases that get referred to, you know, child protective services, we have to remember that again, that's, uh, at the tip of the iceberg, like that's a subset of what is actually happening. I think anecdotally from like some of our clinical providers, I think there's a sense that we're seeing kids who maybe have, um, more complicated kind of cases or more of those kind of multi, uh, who've experienced like multi-victimization, who've experienced multiple kinds of abuse. So, and, and I think that point too, that, um, you know, it's hard to notice the like ebbs and flows as we experience them. But, um, I bet in a few years, as we have a more robust picture of the data, maybe we'll have a better sense.
In, in the one place that I will say, and I bet you a lot of enforcement folks would back me up on this, is that, that online exploitation and that needing to obviously that is, uh, being, growing substantially. So that's one area where things are unfortunately kind of raging out of control. So, um, in that particular instance, that's.
Want to talk around?
Yeah.
Um, do you all have a regional boundary to the populations that you serve?
So we serve families in Clackamas County or who have a connection to Clackamas County. Um, and so most child advocacy centers, um, operate kind of based on county levels, but, um, of course, there's some that serve multiple counties, some that just serve one county. Um, but yeah, kind of a connection to Clackamas County. We know that for some kids, maybe who have caregivers who live, you know, in different counties, um, that doesn't always have to be physically live here now, um, but that connection. And, and if you're uncertain, folks can always refer to us and our intake specialists can kind of parse that out if needed.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, come back around.
Are you, are you under the umbrella of Trillium Family Services then, or? No.
No.
Oh, I thought I saw that slide.
So they are a sponsor for our community conversations.
Yes, and I was just wondering, so does your group or anyone that you are, uh, that you work with, do they push for legislation at all? Because across the United States, there's a lot of really good legislation going on that is, um, kind of putting a thumb down on top of, uh, kids getting online, registering on porn sites and things like that, and Oregon being a very liberal state. Nobody wants to touch that, and, and I'm wondering, have you heard anything anywhere that somebody's actually willing to tackle that and start protecting the kids instead of protecting themselves?
Yeah, so it's a great question. Um, and again, Justine talked about those three areas, we're doing our work in prevention and that leading systems that heal, and really thinking about that bigger picture, what are the policies that lead to healthy development relationships and, in fact, safe environments, and that is exactly what you're speaking to. So we have started up conversations about that. When I talk about our prevention program growing, like that's kind of the next space we're hoping to move into more. We have, uh, a state association of all of the child advocacy centers in the state, and you can imagine that, uh, we will, we'll call it all together. So we're really working on building, uh, capacity in that regard to be tackling some of those really important issues, so I appreciate that so much. We, during Child Abuse Prevention Month, we had a community leaders breakfast, we invited a lot of elected leaders to join us and do a tour of the center. We're thinking next year about doing a day at the Capitol, so we're definitely, like, we have to build some infrastructure around that and some energy around it, but I, I, uh, I'm not gonna speak for a board member, Orlando, and say, uh, what the appetite is there, but I, from our staff and from others that I interact with, there's a lot of energy around doing some of the work.
Glad to hear that. It should kind of be a no-brainer, I mean, when you, when you get a, when somebody, another state has passed a piece of legislation that, that just should be, copy it, copy and paste, sign the ding thing, you know, it, it just should, to me, Oregon is lagging so far behind on legislation protecting our children from the internet, it's almost scary. Um, and it's too bad they can't do more.
A lot, right on, a lot of times, you're right on, but what we need is the force, and that's why we try to create these partnerships, because a lot of times one or two people can go to the legislators at Salem, say it really good, but that's only one or two people. You, when you bring a whole community, a whole village there, and, and now those legislators are taking votes, oh, I better listen, look at all these people. That's why partnerships, and we're, we're the village, but to impact legislation, we gotta do it together. You're right on.
Well, I'll ask a little bit about mandatory reporting. We think of teachers and faith leaders and medical professionals as being in that role where they often, you know, can see the signs and, and have that requirement to report. Uh, it's been fairly recent, I think, that elected officials, all of us city councilors and school board members are also now officially mandatory reporters. Uh, we haven't had a lot of direct, uh, training in what that means or what to do, but, you know, we like to be in that, if you see something, say something role. And, uh, should we be going to school officials if, if we perceive something on a playground or in a grocery store, or something where we think there might be an issue? Do we go directly to law enforcement? Uh, what guidance can you give us in, in, maybe in general terms, to be most effective, then not overdo it, but not, you know, be so cautious that we don't act where we should?
Um, well, I'll say first off, we would love to come and train your group of folks, and we do that in partnership with the Department of Human Services. Um, there is a statewide, um, hotline for reports. That is what mandatory reporters are, are encouraged to do, is to call that hotline. Uh, so when we talk about it, we don't discourage people from calling us, and particularly if people are really not sure, our intake folks can talk to people on the line, but if, if it's a case where there's, there's a concern of abuse and neglect, we're gonna encourage you to hang up and call the hotline. So, uh, that's really the first place, and then, uh, and, and as Justine referenced, that training I do think that it's most effective. A lot of folks I've worked for the state, we had to, uh, had to do that training, and, you know, it's sort of boring, twenty-minute, you know, online video. Doing it in person really does, um, I think add a lot of value. Our staff, DHS staff can kind of address, you know, we can't obviously get don't wanna go there, but to just talk about what's, what's best practice in terms of making that report, what happens after I make a report? A lot of people, especially educators, we continue to have that relationship with that child and family. It's, it's really difficult for them to make a call sometimes, and so how can they then also help to support that family afterwards? How can they make a call into Children's Center and say, hey, I had to make this report, I've got a family who's really struggling with X, and so we could maybe help to find some resources in that way, or get folks connected, but I, I would really encourage you, as a mandatory reporter, this, this training is really ideal in person, and uh, we are happy to do that in partnership with.
Mayor, one of the reasons we created that training is because we, we got that, we get that question a lot, like, I know I'm a mandatory reporter, but I'm not sure, you know, it kind of stuck, so we created that training, so it's really.
I think I'd say there's also just some good basics on, you know, if you just look up the Oregon Child Abuse Hotline, they have some good one and two pagers that just cover some of the basics, so that can be a good place to start as well.
I have a quick question on that. How, what's your classroom size that you normally like to see or and or not exceed, so that, you know, what's comfortable for you? I mean, where can we, if we decided to do something like that, if we could pool together, we can always invite other jurisdictions around us, Clackamas County is a very close group of people, so what's, what's your class size?
Yeah, so, um, if, I would say it kind of depends on the training. Um, stewards of children, again, is intended to also have kind of some, um, discussion, um, in, in context, and so we tend to do twenty-five-ish as a maximum for that. Again, that's the child sexual abuse curriculum. The mandatory reporting, we've done to some pretty big groups, we did, um, Clackamas, um, ESD, um, some of their, like, the early childhood providers, we had like a hundred and ten folks in the room. So some of those topics we can do to a bit of her for sure, and then, and, and we can adapt, I mean, there are some of those, um, trainings, the, uh, digital safety, raising the son of kids, Justine and I just did with, um, Oregon PTA, we had nice, small, like, under twenty groups, and it's really nice if we could do some conversation and um, discussion amongst that, but if, if we've got a bigger group, we can adapt to that and, and just kind of share some resources that, that, you know, we're pretty flexible. Other questions?
Thank you all so much, and Jennifer, you've got this with all the names, you've got the, with all the emails, and, okay. So, that's from Jennifer, and then we can get it. There to you.
Yeah, yeah, I think I sent it to you.
Okay, yeah, I can just, yeah.
Jennifer was very helpful in coordinating, just wanna recognize her. Also wanna say congratulations to Superintendent Bob, and I know, I know you're all in mourning. Um, but congratulations, I've heard a lot of good things about you.
Well, very, very much, and if you get the opportunity ever to go up and tour, it's.
Love to, yeah, host an organized tour.
Yeah. It's, it's very. Thank you all so much for having me. Thank you.
Room, I would have to like trade. I could go in a minute, okay, thank you, I apologize for being.
That's all right. Um, and thank you all for the great, I think it's just a, it's a wonderful organization, that's, that's, um, and once you see it, I went, I went to their, uh, like I said, that the breakfast, uh, with the stakeholders, and it's really impressive, it's really impressive what's being done. Oh, we can never be over, too over-prepared when it comes to something. Um, and with that, we were going to go to please, Chee Shmerber for, um, the school resource, it says school resource officer, so I'll let you take it away.
All right, well, welcome, um, great presentation by Children's Center, we use that quite a bit, obviously, uh, in our line of work, so, uh, but, uh, and they're very helpful, because that's, that group there is, 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 um, required by state, they help us solve cases, they help us solve crimes, and so they're very, very interactive. Appreciate how you presented, uh, interview techniques. But, uh, the purpose of, of us being here today is introduce you our school resource officer, he started with us in, uh, February of this year. Um, and, and immediately hits community running, uh, very grateful, uh, Robbie Teague, uh, who's sitting to my left here, he comes to us with a lot of experience, uh, six years in, you know, Clackamas County. Uh, as a school resource officer at Rex Putnam. Um, we were able to steal him away, uh, when he came back in, in law enforcement, stepped away while for his job was faster and, uh, apprentice in, uh, attrition. Uh, but for work, so I don't think that, that, I would speak to sleep a little bit, and we're trying to get trying to get back into law enforcement, and we were able to, to, uh, grab him, which was nice, he came to us, he's got kids who attend the Gladstone School District, he's very active in the community, as it has been for years. And, um, he's a welcomed addition, and as, as the schools have already experienced what's him being here, so I wanted to introduce you Robbie Teague. Thanks for having me to be here for quite a while. So if you have any questions for Robbie, please, I totally set him up. Or Robert, on, on this, um, or and what it wants your experiences they currently have with school, great, otherwise, uh, thought it was a good idea to introduce Robbie.
From the area?
I am, uh, very close, about seven minutes from the P D. My dad actually graduated from Gladstone, well, graduated from Rex Putnam, so.
So you grew up in.
Yeah, I graduated from, my wife graduated.
One of my students.
Was I?
For like my first year of my.
Really?
Yeah, your name was really familiar, then I was like.
Was it my brother?
Maybe, what was your brother's?
Jerry.
It was over about.
Maybe, yeah.
I will say, I followed him in career day, it was very unfortunate.
You had a backpack?
I know, I tried to compete.
I have a junior internship. And I've done foster care, I've had eight kids, uh, come stay with us, uh, still in contact with, uh, three, three of them, um, two of them, we go over to Idaho to go see and stuff like that, so. Well, it's just that I'm. To have, you know, this, that, they, it's her. Do you feel okay if I say a few things?
Absolutely.
Um, so Robbie just mentioned his foster experience, that was one of the things that stood in the interview setting really stood out, was, uh, his tenderness for, especially, I mean, we're talking about young, in many cases, very, very young uh, children, that they've taken in and fostered and loved up, uh, returned to their families, and that was something that got to my heart right away, uh, during the interview process. Uh, since we had Officer Teague on site, we, I don't know, I should have written down a list of, of the, the variety of people who have, apropos of nothing, come to me to talk about, wow, we really found, we really found a great SRO, I mean, and, and often, these comments are coming from staff who maybe are skeptical of what the police's role in our, in our schools are, uh, just inherently. And Robbie's won a lot of hearts over in a very short period of time, you know, it's still one one really sweet, uh, he, you'll notice if you're here at lunchtime, Robbie's here or at one of the other schools, and he's always sitting with a different group of kids, he's always moving around the cafeteria, interacting. Handing out thirty-seven stickers the other day. But, uh, at the high school in the mornings, uh, he's taken to occasionally working the front door with our, with our counselor Heidi Sauce, and there's, they each occupy a door, and they'll offer kids a choice. Uh, so one, one morning, it was mountains or ocean, right? They're just really trying to entice the kids. And it has the impact of, all it does is everybody who walks in the door is smiling, one way or another. And that's how they're starting to do it, so, thank you very much. It's, uh, it's fun, right? When you enjoy what you do, it makes it, it's not much more fun to do. I enjoy being around kids.
I think what we found when we brought Robbie into the organization is he adds value. He adds value. Two thousand nineteen, when I first met Bob, uh, you know, I, my philosophy was if our, if our schools and our kids are helping, our community is definitely helping. And that hasn't changed, uh, I think Bobby pulled me on that, or verified that, but, and I believe that today, and, and Robbie has that. So, really appreciate it. Yes.
Uh, one of the first days, uh, when Officer Teague was outside the door at the elementary school, I was dropping off my grandson then, I ran into a parent outside who said, why are the police here? Is there something going on? Is there something danger in the community? That's a lot of where parents' mindsets are these days. Uh, and so I think, and, and I think we're beyond that with a lot of our families now, because you have been present at so many events, and they understand part of it is just forming relationships and getting to know and having people familiar with you and comfortable with you, and make yourself approachable, um, but, uh, it's all part of the same thing that Jeremiah referenced, uh, that that understanding among some in the community, that, that the police and the school, whatever relationship they have, either comes out of a, you know, a bad situation, something going on, a dangerous thing, some, some event that has to be respected to. And, uh, it's nice that in this case, it becomes something that puts a smile on people's faces when they walk in the door, and, um, uh, you know, makes them think. Maybe this is a career I'd like to pursue, or maybe this is, uh, you know, uh, somebody that, that can help me if I'm in the situation of those hundred and sixty perhaps kids in the, in the district, so uh, it's a real positive thing for the community, and, and I, I am appreciative of the, the joint decision that was made in, in hiring this officer to, to serve.
Me too.
Well, well.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, you were up next.
All right. Um, we've taken some action, uh, one of our goals that we set at the first, one of our first meetings as a city council in January a year ago, was to form a youth council. We kind of adjusted the timing of when to be implemented. Uh, Luke, are you prepared to, to say a little bit about that? Because you were one of the ones who was kind of, uh, was that, was that a, a, a shake of the head, no?
I just a couple things, nothing.
Okay, all right, well.
Yeah, this is something that we've definitely kept the school board apprised of, you know, it's something that we've been very excited to keep moving forward. Last time, it was an idea, and today it exists. We have six applicants for our board. Uh, we'll be looking at interviewing them next Friday, I believe, they all, uh, you know, they were very strong applicants with a broad range of interests, a lot of things that I wasn't expecting to see kind of in their outside of school extracurricular activities. So we're excited to be moving forward with that. We got a good report from Amy at the high school, letting us know that these are all, you know, strong applicants, so it's nothing short of what we're hoping for. Take questions, but we're, we're just very excited to be moving forward with this one.
We, we realized going in that sometimes the students who are most involved in extracurricular things and sports and, and, uh, you know, advanced academics may have the least amount of time to get to something like this. On the other hand, those are the type that have the self-discipline to really put themselves into even one more thing and, and bring a lot to it. Uh, and they eventually join the, the city council to, to look at one, an example of that type of person. Um, so, uh, I've not seen the applicants myself, I don't know, uh, what they are, uh, but, uh, we were hoping for about seven. Uh, we were hoping for about seven, we got to six. And. We'll take questions from. Uh, from you, if it's not about individuals in particular, but about the, about the concept.
I'll add to that number two really quickly of six applicants relative to a city like Oregon City where they have a. You know, considerably larger population and received, I think it was around fourteen or fifteen applicants. For their seventh position council, we received six, and so relative to a city that size, I think we did very well.
Uh, Luke, I was gonna ask, who, who breaks the tie?
What's that?
Who breaks the tie?
We'll have to figure that one out. We're hoping everyone's on the same page, but. We'll see what happens.
Will they get a chance to interact with some of the other youth councils, like?
Absolutely.
That's great.
Yeah. It would be our ambition that we can send them to the youth summits that a lot of these other cities are taking place in. Uh, just as many opportunities as they can get, that we'd like to introduce them to a lot of our city staff. Uh, the individuals that kind of power, uh, you know, municipal government, what it would take to. Get a closer look at those positions, how we run a city.
We even received an application for the name, Raymond.
That's exciting.
Incoming freshman.
I do have a question. I'm curious how, um. How the applications were accessed or distributed or what have you, uh, obviously through the schools, but. How were, did students just sort of self-select to fill it out, or were specific students invited to fill it out, or what was that process like?
There was no specific student demographic targeted, it was just a general broadcast, we had. Uh, employees from the city come and speak at. Was it a career day? Yeah, here at the high school. Where we were able to actually interact and speak with a number of them. Uh, but a lot of it ended up being word of mouth. Uh, Raymond was an excellent resource and, and, uh. Helping broadcast that even further, but a lot of them said, well, I heard about it from my other friend who applied and. Got it that way.
This group is going, there's going to be. More that want to be on it, so it's actually a really exciting time. To start this class.
And as far as the schedule, we had hoped to make this election prior to the end of this academic year. Uh, but we'll have them, uh, begin meeting. Maybe in, in August for some orientation and some sort of planning for the year. And then their year of service will be, will coincide with the next school year. So we invited people that are currently eighth grade through currently eleventh grade to participate because they will be high school age in the coming year. All right. Raymond, once again, was, uh, a very welcome presence at the grand opening of our new public works facility. Last week, week before, um, we've had several. Uh, you know, walkthroughs with the city council, but this was the first one that was for the community. And, uh, even though it is a city building. It is what we call a, a, a critical facility, it's. Uh, it's the place where, uh, because we have generators built in. Uh, and staff who will handle, uh, emergencies, you know, a, a climate emergency or. Another kind of situation where, uh, the public works who, who handle our roads and our, uh, other kind of infrastructure. Will need to be involved, uh, it's, it's of interest to everyone in the community, uh, not just the city, but the schools as well. So, um, I think you have a flyer describing, uh, that in your package today. And. The great thing about this. Well, a couple of things. First of all, there's a little box on the side that talks about the progressive design build, which was, uh, the means by which, uh, we have. Decided to, uh, construct some of our key facilities here in the city. We've managed to do it within budget. On time, in this case, we finished a month early and we're under budget. Uh, and I know that as the district, and we'll talk about this soon, is looking at facilities too. You might want to consider this as a process, we, we're getting to the place where. People from other cities are coming to us and saying, how'd that go for you? And we're giving them positive responses. Uh, but, uh, for many years, our public works. Department worked in really, um. Uh, what would we say inadequate?
Inadequate.
Inadequate facilities, um, and now. There's an opportunity for them to meet with stakeholders in comfortable meeting spaces. To come in from a day's work when you're, uh, you know, working with asphalt and. Uh, the contents of sewer pipes and everything else, and come in and get cleaned off and get prepared to, to head home. Uh, and it's got, it's got showers, changing facilities, locker room. Uh, and what's that?
Laundry.
Laundry in there, yeah, all of that, so, uh, a lot of maybe what was missing before. We did a, we did the careful kind of process and preparation that you all are doing for your facilities. To say what was really needed, what was missing, what can we provide? And we did it by converting a building that, uh. Had sort of a basic metal structure. Uh, and we were able to, uh. Because our budget was limited because of the high cost these days of doing construction. Uh, we were able to convert an existing facility into a place that looks like a brand new build. But really wasn't. Uh, and, uh, that was part of the reason why we did it under budget and, uh, on time. Uh, it was also, uh, a wonderfully entertaining pro- project. For families in the community, I would walk by at least once a week and often saw people with kids in strollers. Uh, so, you know, that all, that always appeals, those of you with very young children know how appealing that is to a community. Uh, any questions?
I just want to say too that it, it's, it's inviting to the commu- to the public now. Where before it was a little scary to go into anybody inside that gate, now it's open to the public and. People can walk inside, there's somebody there to greet you. It, it's a, a much nicer and warmer feeling for our city.
I was gonna ask, and so it's on, it's, cause I don't even remember a building there, honestly. So, and I, cause I was like, wow, where's the old one? And now you just said that it's, it was there and.
It's, it's like they peeled off the outside, was basically sheet metal. And then there, there's the, there's this new, uh. I forget what they call it, but this, this kind of surface that you can put on a building where the insulation is built in. The surface on the inside is conducive to the interior of a building, the surface on the outside is weatherproof and conducive to the exterior of the building. It, it goes up quickly, uh, you know, once the outside walls were down, they put a concrete slab down. They carved the areas into where the walls were going to be, and it just went up like. You know, like Legos, uh, it's just amazing how, how, how it was done, so, uh.
It's beautiful.
Yes.
I think it's still you.
All right, we'll give you an update on, uh, the Gladstone Library, uh, Jackie Betts, our city administrator, has met with, uh, some of the library. Uh, staff and that, and county people and. As a report for us on, on where we are with that.
Yeah, so it's very exciting times, Clackamas County who operates the library. They invited me to the rest of their meetings to start planning for the grand opening. They're gonna take temporary occupancy in August. Mid-August. What that means is that they're gonna shut down the current library to allow a transition time, and you're saying that that could be between three to five weeks. They're not expecting it to go that long. But that will give them time to move it to the new library. Uh, they're planning to open up the first part of September to the public. With the grand opening probably later in September. Uh, one of the amenities that they're very excited about is that they're incorporating what are called library lockers. Um, so that if you want, it's like Amazon, if you want to buy something, you'll pick it up in locker. You can do it after hours. And you just check it out online and have that accessibility there, and it will really help the library director to gauge. High traffic times, so that when she's, uh, planning for what time. Of the week that the library should be open. It gives her an idea of when that should be, so. I'm sure all of you have seen it, it's looking amazing, they are on target to open up, like I said. Probably the first part of September, so it's very exciting.
Obviously, the proximity to the elementary school is one great feature, uh, we're already using the library on Wednesday afternoons for a great. Uh, uh, snack and steam program that is, uh, involving a lot of families from the school, I see them walking over directly and. You know, coming away really happy, so it's one of those collaborative things that, uh, uh, it, it just. Makes Gladstone a great place to live and to raise children. Uh, because of the way that the, the staff, you know, they, they, they share the needs and find a way to come up with a new way to serve. The community and to address, uh, families' needs for after-school activities, for extra learning opportunities. And, uh, we've always had our librarians involved in the, in the community, I say our librarians, they were city staff up until the end of twenty nineteen. Now they're technically county staff, uh, and, uh, but. They're still ours.
I want to echo how great that snack and steam, we were there today, we've been there for several weeks for our families and it's just happened, I mean, with, there's a lot of. Lot of kids have a really great time, so that's been a wonderful program, and I know that. That's on Education Foundation was also involved in helping, I think, fund some of the. Um, materials and snacks for some of that, so. It's been great.
That program, actually, they brought in a new librarian and she ju- she began that program. And it's been so popular, they have moved people around so that she could get additional help. In order to help, you know, make sure that every family that comes in on Wednesdays. And they are re-gearing for the, you know, September, once that school closes and comes back around. To have that as a, as an even bigger priority, because it, it just serves a need. Um, that empty Wednesday afternoon thing, it just serves a big need, so I'm really excited for it.
And, and I don't know how many of you were involved, but, um, you know, it's been now. Let's see, it was late twenty eighteen that we first appointed the committee that would help, you know. Determine the values and, and begin the process of designing a library for this community and the shared branch in the old lodge community. Um, and. Part of that has been listening to the community of what they wanted a library to be and trying to design it accordingly. And, uh, it's very gratifying for me to hear from children at the elementary school level. Who are saying, I can't wait for that library to open, it's so great that it's so close to the center of everything in the community. And I'm really looking forward to the puppet theater or, you know, the, the outdoor garden or some of the other parks. Uh, when you, when you do that with that kind of community engagement, and then people say, what I wanted is what's gonna be there. Uh, then it just builds up that anticipation for an opening, so, uh, I know it will be a very popular place. Uh, it won't be as big as some of the Clackamas Library branches in other cities. Uh, but I think it will be adequate to serve our community and, uh. Because of the way it's designed and because of the set, some of the technology that's involved, as Jackie alluded to. It'll give us, give the library staff the ability to adjust hours in a way that, that meets the needs of more families. Uh, based on the demand and the times, uh, that they really want to be there. We'll try to see that happen.
Wanted to add that we don't know what we're going to do with the old library site yet. Uh, we do get a lot of questions about that, the city owns the property and the building. In twenty twenty-five, the council will have to make some decisions, but we'll have to go in and have an assessment aid of the building to determine. Whether or not it can be reused, or if there's just too much remediation that it's best to try to sell it, so. I look for that to be on the, the council's agenda in twenty twenty-five to decide what to do with. The old site.
Um, so we are now to, uh, agenda item number seven, uh, with the new superintendent introduction. Is this you, Bob?
Yep. Hey, be glad to. So you all know Jeremiah, so this isn't really an introduction. Where you don't know who he is, but, uh, just a little bit about him, um, Jeremiah lives in Wilsonville. Married, two kids, oldest is a junior high school, so they've been. Doing the college tours this year, looking at possibilities where Will might head up. College next year, or a year from now. And, um. Uh, he is an educator that, uh, has worked for Gladstone on two different occasions. First was from two thousand six to two thousand eight. Um, he originally applied to be the principal at John Wetten Elementary School in two thousand six. And figured out at the time that. The principal was probably in the same interview as he was, that was maybe a higher. And so he quickly pivoted and decided, you know, maybe that assistant principal job would be a pretty good job at John Wetten Elementary School. So he joined us for two years at the time. I strongly tried to discourage him from leaving, but he decided he was gonna leave. To become principal of, uh, Riverdale School. In Portland, where he was for four years. Uh, following that stint, he went to Sherwood School that. And was a principal of an elementary school at that time. In two thousand sixteen, um, several of you will remember, uh, Pia Leonard served in the role of, uh. Assistant Superintendent at that time. And she, uh. She, we knew. She was on a path to retire for quite a while. But she had announced that that would be her final year, fifteen, sixteen school year would be her final year, so we started a search. In the springtime. Uh, with the idea. That the possibility that whoever hired could potentially be the successor. To, to me in that job. And, um. Uh, finishing that process, Jeremiah was the winner. And it was brought on board in, uh, the fall of two thousand sixteen. And, um, I think he thought I was gonna be here for about two years. Turned out to be a smidge longer than that, um. They're, they're just, with interesting opportunities that came up that I didn't want to walk away from, like, yeah. And, uh, uh, so he has been with Gladstone now for ten total years, um, this is his eighth in this job. And, uh, that's twice as long as he stayed anywhere else, if you need a job set his head. And it was, it was interesting, the other night, there was a, there was a nice function for me at retirement function. And, um, Joe Gaffari, who was superintendent here in the nineteen eighties, was there. And, um. I had a chance to visit with Joe afterwards. And. He's, he's, he's came to Gladstone, I believe it was in nineteen seventy-three, was assistant superintendent for nine years. Superintendent nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety-one, so he had an eighteen-year run. And he said, you know, it was never my intention to go to Gladstone. And only stay and, and go for longer than two years. My plan was two years and I would move on. But he said, there's just something about Gladstone. That once you get there, you don't want to leave again. And that's generally what I tell people when, all right. There's, there's something special about this place. And, um, and Jeremiah's found that out. And he found out that this is gonna be a pretty good home, he will be an outstanding super. Outstanding super, I have no doubts about that. He will lead the school district in a direction that will be incredibly positive. And, uh. Within about twenty-four hours, you'll say, Bob, who? So, welcome aboard Jeremiah, I'm happy for you, I'm happy for the community, I. I shared the other night, I thought the board made an outstanding, uh, decision, when they made the decision. Uh, I was careful how soon I would say that, I mean, the whole process, but I didn't want them. To think I was trying to. Send them a direction. Uh, they made that decision on their own and it was the right decision. So anyway, welcome aboard Jeremiah.
I didn't bring my yellow glasses, Bob.
It was such a good speech, though.
Uh, I don't know what to say exactly, but I, 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 one of the things I brought into my interview was this. Transition plan, I, I haven't recycled it yet, cause it cost me too much money. At Office Depot. Bracked with printed on cardboard. It was the thickest, densest paper you've got. Uh, but I thought I'd just like. Kind of share what the, the, what, the way I envisioned that transition and, and maybe how that's actually going. Uh, it had four goals, first was to deepen the relationships with the, with the board. And start to, uh, start to reframe the relationship a little bit, and, um. You know, intended for, for the first and second goals to run from April through June, so. Uh, as we're putting the school year. Closer to bed, um, we have some opportunities, some pretty heavy, uh. Some weighty topics to, to, to convene and talk about, that's providing lots of opportunity, and Bob's been really gracious about inviting me into one-on-ones. Uh, and I really am enjoying that. Second is to provide continuity for the long-range facilities planning committee. Uh, that, that I've been, uh, helping to facilitate for a while, and I think I get to share about that a little bit later. Uh, and then there's just, uh, deeper, deep engagement.
And then there's just deeper, deep engagement, really in September. Deep engagement with all of our different constituencies. So there will need to be, per the state, there will need to be another round of, of deep engagement around the Student Success Act. And that's a really nice opportunity to, to get out amongst the community and, and listen with different ears. Bob warned me of this, but he said, you know, pretty quick, you won't be, you walk into a room and you won't be good old Bob anymore. Somebody's going to have an agenda. And that's fine, that's good. I just need to, I just need to be mindful of that and self-aware. And then really want to launch the year strongly with a very intentional communications plan. So I've been talking to some staff who have communications backgrounds and communications expertise. Been talking with other superintents, especially folks who came up internally within their organization. And I'll be excited to share that with the school board in July, and then y'all would like to take a peek at it. Love your, as well. You may have seen, I want to just highlight one connection with the city while I have the floor. You may have seen an Oregon, Oregon Live article a couple of weeks ago now, it came out. That same author was, wrote the doom and gloom article back in October, November about anything's awful in the state of Oregon. And the, the truth is, school attendance has been brutal. And, and Oregon was one of the few states that, that took a step backwards last year as opposed to forward. But in that first article, it kind of barely mentioned that Gladstone banks and Park Rose with only three school districts that made any progress at all, just a little bit. It was 1.4% and I rounded that up to two Oregonian rounds and down the line. I got a chance to come and present to you in the fall about Gladstone shows up, really a homegrown marketing campaign. And it worked. And so that's why the Oregon Oregonian wanted to come out and talk. Of course, they wanted to come out and make it into a kindergarten story. And I gave it my best shot to say this is a community story, this is a city, city story. We were a little bit more successful, when two days later KGW wanted to come out and basically do the same story, but televised. And an hour before I was panicking, I texted Jackie and said, please tell me the mayor's going to be there. I realized that I need media training, not, not just by fire. And I think I'm going to take it from Mr. Milch, Mayor Milch. He and a couple of our staff members were a lot more comfortable and a lot more loquacious in front of the camera. I took the advice of Ben Bowman, who works for us, and, and his advice was, you don't have to fill the space, like, just, just say what you want to say and that's enough. So that's why I got one little pithy comment in there. That was it. But I just, I just, it's been a very successful effort. And, you know, it, it truly has not been a, there's, there's no secret to it except for being really disciplined about meeting together around data as a data team. And being really clear with the community about why this is so important and, and helping the community understand this is a social problem, not a school problem. This is about mental health, it's about wellness. And I think that's been, like, that's the reason it's been successful, to so many folks in the city, business owners, churches. You all have embraced it as it, and we're busy cooking up Gladstone Shows Up 2.0. That'll, so in order to do that, we've got to declutter the city. So tomorrow, we're actually going around, take them all down. I have a question if that, whether or not that's legal to step onto somebody's property with the sign that I gave them. You can advise me after. And we'll launch that in a, in a kind of a similar fashion. You guys will all be invited, our welcome, district welcome back will be the morning of August 27th. And it'll be here at the high school and I'll give you a specific time, so you know, you'll know it's in the morning. And you're always welcome to come join us, we'd love to have as many of you as, would be our honor, yes. Thank you all and thanks. Appreciate the assist. I'll say two things. When we have temporary signs up for elections, our public works market goes out, picks up signs that are still in, in areas, brings them to a facility and candidates, so there is precedent for removing signs, you know, when it's appropriate to do so. So you are welcome to, you know, whether individual people will be upset with you, you might put the word out before you haven't let them know.
Program, I have a whole bunch of my school candidate ones in our backyard.
As far as dealing with the media, the other thing we learned, you, you said they wanted to make it a kindergarten story because that was where they focused in their Oregonian too. They took 33 minutes of video with, you know, a mayor, an administrator-to-be, I mean superintendent-to-be and, and a staff member articulating in great detail why this program has worked so well. But it happened to be on the day that they were serving Road Runner pizza in the kindergarten cafeteria. And once those kids came in and started eating, the guy, the camera guy was, that was the footage that you saw on the news. You know, our words, yeah, a 51 sentence, you know, chopped up and combined, you know, is what gets out there. So if you ever do media interviews with the television news, don't expect to get more than a full sentence on the air. Be happy with what you get. And our kindergarten children looked as happy and well-adjusted and well-fed as they could be. And that was a good part of the story. We made, as you learned earlier, we made a real good, district made a real good decision this year as far as food services and menus, and it continues to be a very popular thing.
Just a weird question, just curiosity thing. Sherwood, what Bob said, what's, what's your commute like in the morning and at home?
To here?
Yeah.
I live in Wilsonville, so I commute.
Okay.
Yeah, I go about 25 minutes.
25, that's not bad then, okay.
Longer in the afternoon. I'm guessing it's like, maybe someday it's 25 and someday it's almost an hour because it's that, morning's predictable after you.
Yeah, like today. I have a quick question. So I just, in talking with other community members, people, and they had heard that the enrollment was down at the school after the kids had come back from, you know, the break, COVID break, I'm not sure what you'd want to call it, but, and they kind of speculated, well, how many of those kids there, folks decided that maybe homeschooling wasn't so bad after all? And that's what they decided to continue doing, which is, I have no judgment, no judgment at all. But had, did you find that at all, that people called and said, hey, you know, we're just going to stay at home another year or two? This is all good?
A small, a small group.
Okay.
The enrollment, the enrollment decline, our theory, which we believe is, is based in, in reality, is, it has to do with housing.
Okay.
Housing prices, the difficulty to afford a home at Gladstone. Because we are, you know, have remained about 30% of our students come to us from other school districts and find a way to transfer in, get in here.
Right.
And that number has stayed static while the, the resident enrollment has gone down as, as they see.
And hasn't the birth rate down, gone down as well?
10%.
Birth rate's not 10%.
The whole state, not just.
Yeah. How soon does school board will get to see a demographic study?
Thank you for that.
So we're on agenda item number eight, which is the school district about the free breakfast and lunch for all, which is exciting news.
Yeah. So Michael, you're right, service program has really stepped up this year. We were very fortunate last year, our, our coordinator and director of our food service program was open. It was also the previous year, we had difficulty building, it's really very, very difficult. This year, we happened to have a guy that, again, the director of the food service program inside USLA School District, which is in Florence, Oregon. And he wanted to move to metro area. He happened to have the job open at the right time. He jumped in and we said, yes. He's known as Chef Dave. Chef Dave, so if you hear kids talk about Chef Dave, that's who they're talking about. The guy that's in charge of the food service program. And there have been many really nice improvements that have happened, participation has grown during the course of the year. And one thing that he brought to us was a strong interest in attempting to qualify for federal programs that could provide food for more kids. And there's a, there's a program called, I always have to look at the names, Community Eligibility Provision. Those are the three words I put together very often. But that's, that's the name of the program. And essentially, if we have reached a certain threshold, a percentage of students that qualify under the federal standards, these are not the federal these are more stringent, so these are families that are on apartheid. It's kids that are in foster care, it's families that are homeless. And that's what you count as part of your, your count. And through a lot of work of doing actual interviews with some families, we learned that more than 40% of our kindergarten through fifth grade children qualified for that program, and that was the threshold, 40% was the threshold. Once you reach the threshold, then you qualify for free lunch, free breakfast and lunch program for all kids from that date that you qualify for four years forward, regardless of what your enrollment looks like for those four years, which are qualified for four continuous years. So in, in April, we launched it with kindergarten and, and first through fifth. What we found is that just in that one month, our participation in the, the hot lunch program, so that's the program that's free, increased by 10% in just that one month. We know that that's going to jump up even more. So they went to work on middle school and high school. And right now, we're in the final stages that we know that we qualify. We have to get the sign-offs yet from the state that we've qualified. Once we get the sign-offs, then that program will launch next fall. So beginning next fall, every student in Gladstone School District will have free breakfast and lunch if they choose. Isn't that great? So anyway, Jennifer has, Rachel, Opera, our CFO for the school district, put together a nice sheet that kind of describes the program in a lot of detail. And Jennifer will send that to, to your folks, Jackie, and you can distribute it to the council. We also need to get it against the board because they don't have this level of detail either. To just share, share with you, if you, if you're interested in reading the two pages, I think you'll find it interesting and what that looks like. But it's a, it's a great opportunity for our kids. We know, we know, when kids are fed, they're going to do better in school. When they're fed, they're going to do better in school. So we have that opportunity.
And they're more inclined to be there.
Yep.
Bob, is the summer food program affiliated with that or is that a separate?
It's not affiliated with this, but it's a separate program that's free. And, and that'll launch, I don't remember the dates, but that'll launch over the summer and, I think, probably for eight weeks.
Okay, and those are going to be at, near, at parks or near.
Dave, Dave has all kinds of ideas where he wants to go, Chef Dave. You know, previously, we, we did all this, the Gladstone Center for Children's Families, and we sacked lunch up to some kids that were in middle school. But now he's, he's got different tips he wants to put up around town to attract kids, culture where they live. So it's all good stuff.
So you'll have, you will have summer school this year at all the schools, or I know that the, the funding isn't there.
Yeah, middle school, just middle school.
Say that again?
Just the middle school.
Okay, so just middle school for middle school age kids or at the middle school for everyone?
The former, so, so rising, rising sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders. And that's because of a grant that we received a couple of decades ago.
Okay.
The other, we were 144th on a, on a list where the, the ordered list were 77 were, were funded. Yeah, yeah, would have been nice.
And you feed the kids at summer school then?
Yeah.
All of them?
All of them.
Like this? And that, and this program that Mr. Sures talked.
We'll give you the full list of where we're going to have food at this summer.
Okay.
And that's something you'll probably want to publish, Jackie, in your newsletter.
But that's not only for students in summer school, it's for anybody, and they don't even have to be Gladstone student, it's just.
I'm pretty confident when I tell you this, that, that there's no requirement, eligibility requirement for free lunch in summer. For all kids.
Bob, do you know how, you, you talked about that 40% threshold that enabled us to get into this program. How many of the other districts in this region meet that same threshold? The, the Oregonian article made it sound like we were comparatively more wealthy than some of the Portland districts, obviously. And they have a bigger problem with attendance there than we do, but where do we fit in, into the bigger scheme?
Yeah, well, I don't know, I don't know the, where we fit in the bigger scheme. This criteria is different, though, than what you hear reported. What you hear reported has to do with the free and reduced budget program. And so that's, that's a different criteria, different eligibility for that. And communities have changed a lot in the last few years, that includes Portland. As gentrification has hit, communities are not as poor as they used to be, that used to be really poor because housing costs have driven out the poor. That's the reality. And the data has not caught up with that yet.
Are there metrics from other school districts that have implemented this, leading to a correlation in increasing attendance?
Look it up, I don't know it off the top of my head, but see.
I think it's hard to tell, I mean, I can't, our school's been free and reduced lunch for a lot of years. So it happened before, so there, there's not a wait, like, I think you have to have it happen. Yeah, the on switch was a long time ago, so we've still, we're still struggling with attendance, but if you, so it's unique that it's happening at the same time we're trying to improve attendance. And then we can see if like it is, you know, worse, yeah, yeah. But I, I, I wonder, like, elementary, they're probably, I wonder if you'll see it at middle and high more.
That was my guess, those kids are going to be there, because that's where their parents put up.
Yeah, or is middle and high, if I am going to be able to go eat, I'm more probably likely to show up versus if I don't have food to bring and I don't have money, then I don't want to show up. Because I don't have a way to get any food, right? Or I'm going to leave to go get food and then I'm not coming back.
Maybe the stigma of a free and reduced lunch.
Yeah, exactly, so just like your recent chat, I, I.
That's everybody, it's, yeah. There is no stigma.
All right, moving on to agenda item number nine, which is also the school district, the long-range facility planning.
So I'm going to share with you just a little bit about where we are in process with our facilities, facilities process, facilities planning process. So this is a plan to develop, this is a plan to develop a plan for 10 years of what, what our facilities needs are. And there have been several steps along the way. The first thing we did was bring in professionals over the summertime last year to come take stock of everything. So just a, just a state-of-play report on what's going on, what's going well, what needs, what the lifespan of any given system or roof or classroom technology is. And so the architects that we have engaged with, a company called Brick, they, they created, this is the very skinny version, so it's a, it's a big thick report. And it's just that, it's not, it has nothing to do with, it's nothing aspirational. It's simply what, taking stock and measuring exactly what it is that you have so that the district then can evaluate and start to later on put things in order of priority, right? The next thing that we did was, so that's, that's the, that's the technical component of it. The really adaptive component of it is something that many of you have, were participants in, right? So Councilmember Donnington was involved in, also Huckbee was there as well, when we, when we came to the city and did a, a kind of a city listening session. But there were listening sessions, there were 11 of them that happened at all. Mostly with students and families representing groups that don't often get represented or get underrepresented in a process like this. So vocal populations, including students at our schools, to get some perspective on, with some prompts, how's the school serving you and, and how's the school not serving? And so we, we appreciated the opportunity to do that with the city group as well. I thought I'd just read for you a few of the, they bulleted out the takeaways. And here are a couple of them, there, there are two slides worth, I'm not going to read them all, but. Recognition of the district's efforts to promote diversity and inclusion, but also highlighting areas for improvement such as need for better staff representation, multilingual signage, artwork and displays, gender-neutral restrooms, et cetera. Identify barriers to student success, including housing insecurity, food insecurity, language barriers, transportation. Community schools needed in school to foster connection and also as a way that the school can be used in a set. in a setting like this when school's not in session. Need to create bridges for neurodivergent students to connect with neurotypical peers. So informal spaces, standard club options, that kind of thing. So I could, I could read them all to you, but it would be happy to send you a couple of slides. But you get a flavor for the kind of information gleaned from those meetings. The next step was to form an actual committee. And so the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee has some people who are involved in that. It has some staff, it has some community members. And it's about thirty five people who are getting together, four sessions, about two and a half hours long. We are halfway there. So we've had the first two sessions, we have the one at each school site. And that is a, that's a process. So we always start with a tour so folks can kind of see what, you know, a space like now, you're getting to see the theater, maybe in a different way if you've come for a musical or something. You've never seen around the corner of the curtain before. So we do a tour and then we do some processing and the processing has led us to a place where where we've gotten to the creation of priorities by which all of the projects suggested in the report can then be put into some order. And so the second, at the second meeting, we arrived at what those what those priorities are. They are improved learning environments. So improvements directly impact the quality of education, such as updated classrooms, technology infrastructure, and resources to support teaching and learning, outdoor education, recreation. Safety and belong. Addresses all potential securities concerns. Also addresses emotional and physical safety. That came up in our city in meeting for sure. Future ready spaces, ensuring that school facilities are equipped with up to date technology, infrastructure, equipment, and adaptable to evolving educational needs. Infrastructure maintenance, maintenance needs, infrastructure improvements to ensure the longevity of facilities. I think about the work that you all just completed, and you're creating a city works environment that's going to be here and be ready for fifty more years. Equity inclusion, equitable access to educational resources and opportunities center those most impacted by inequity. And finally, I think this last one's great, that folks didn't forget this. Functional outdoor environments. Ensure school sites are fully functional as learning and recreational resources. So the perfect example of this is the is the track at the stadium that gets used all the time. There's always a community member walking the track. At night, the soccer leagues come in, they provide, they provide rental fees. That is, that is a truly sustainable resource because it it actually sustained its own replacement. When the turf was ready to be replaced, it was the rentals for that facility that allowed. So like spreading that notion. I don't know what that will mean over time, but that is a priority is being included. I was really excited about that because it speaks to the fact that the school is the community's most valuable asset. Literally, the school properties are incredibly valuable assets in the community. And if the schools are functioning well, that relates to the property value of all the, all of the folks who live in the city and their quality of life. So later on, the the next two meetings are May twenty eighth at Cracks Burger and then June eleventh at John Webb. That's where the meat potatoes is going to happen. Those five hours have been pretty, pretty action packed. And a lot of the kind of norming and forming is done, now it's time to storm, I suppose. And then there will be a report to the school board this summer. I'm not sure if it's going to be July or August. School board will be getting that report in full of that. Bit of fun process to, I have not been, I got to, my first ever taste of a process like this was when we built the center and and did all this back in my first tour of duty, so. It's been a really, it's a passion of mine and it it's very invigorating.
Thanks, Jeremiah. All right, and Mr. Mayor, you are our last agenda item, which is the affordable housing in Gladstone.
Well, we've already alluded to the fact that low enrollment and a behind enrollment in schools, which is happening across the state. A lot of people attribute that to changes in demographics. People are communitarian later, they're postponing having families if they have them at all, or they have smaller families. And and we're not seeing the same growth in family size or in school age enrollment that we used to. But at local levels, we also know that one component of lower enrollment in schools is the ability for families with school age children to afford to live in the community. And we were retired, it's six years ago now, to to begin a housing needs analysis in our community and look at how many families are paying more than, you know, a certain threshold of their income on housing and found that Gladstone is one of the most severely rent burdened communities in Clackamas County or in the state because our, it's possible to live here proportion to what people make who who live here and work here. And Superintendent Stewart was in attendance in that meeting, talking about declining enrollment. And it had been going on for a couple of years already. This was back at the end of twenty eighteen. Well, that pattern has continued. And so a couple of things are going on. We built an affordable housing project here in Gladstone a couple of years ago, but it serves people who are fifty and older. So it's not something that contributed to better enrollment in the school district. We constructed or a a large apartment complex was constructed in this community before that. And at the time, we said, well, two bedroom apartments, three bedroom apartments, we're going to have some young families in there. And at the school district, you did a projection on enrollment, you thought, what, do you get sixty kids out of that?
About eighty.
About eighty kids out of that. If it turned out to be what, a handful, five? Okay.
Five new kids to Gladstone out of a hundred and twenty four units.
So so I don't want to get you too excited about, you know, the prospect for the school district. But one of the things that happened recently is that partly because of interest at the local level and partly because of mandates coming down from the state level from the legislature, cities have made changes in some of their zoning rules. And in Oregon, Oregon was one of the first states that statewide required cities of a certain size to no longer be allowed to have single family zoning areas limited to just that type of detached, single family homes. And the the move was made to add middle housing types as something that has to be required in most of our formerly single household home neighborhoods. So our seven point two zone, which is the homes in the ridge area of the community and the five point O zone, which is the homes in the flat area of the community, five thousand square foot lots, seventy two square foot lots. All those zones now are allowed to have, to to modify their properties for middle housing, which is duplexes, triplexes, up to fourplexes, or cottage clusters around a central common area. The kinds of housing that used to exist in communities decades ago, but sort of went away as as the suburbs developed and and people wanted the bigger homes. We saw shifts around in the type of homes that people wanted to live in during the pandemic. As people started working more from home, there was greater demand for some of the larger single family homes. And we saw people moving into those, and of course, the prices went up. But what's happening now, after having made those zoning changes, we're beginning to see at a higher level than we ever have in the past, people coming to our local planning department and making pre-application for considering changing a piece of property that was a single family home at one time to something that may be a duplex or a triplex or adding an accessory dwelling unit. An example I can point to that maybe some of you in the school district are familiar with is the sort of hitting quarter to the elementary school on Exeter Street between the fire station and the elementary school is a lot that was about a, I think it was about a seven thousand square foot lot that had a small one thousand square foot home on it about six years ago. And there was a man, an elderly man, looking for a home in Gladstone. And what he decided to do was buy that thousand square foot home, tear it down and put up a triplex that had two two story units and one one story unit that this man could live in because he needed a home that was more universal to design and accessible for his needs. And having the two other units on the property enabled him to rent those units and afford the mortgage and the and the construction cost of the whole thing. This was before the state put in these middle housing rules, but it was a real good example of a property that got redeveloped in a way that worked for the owner of it and also provided potential housing for somebody right in a school neighborhood and near the downtown area. And we're starting to see other people make application for those kinds of properties. And I think you've been given a list of some of them. This is a list of of contacts that come to our planning department. Sometimes somebody will propose something and they'll say, gee, I'd like to put three units on this. And they say, well, the way you've got it laid out, you know, you're not meeting the setback requirements. You're a little too close to your neighbor. Work on it, come back to us. And then they do, and our planning department works very well with people to make sure that what they come up with is something that will work. Some people are tearing down the garage and saying, I, in the space where the garage was, I can put a two story, two apartment thing that'll make a triplex out of my, out of my property. Now, again, I'll I'll throw out the caveat, you you look at the example, the Webster Ridge Apartments. This may not mean huge change in in affordable homes for young families in the community, but it has the potential to do so. And as we're just beginning to see these things coming in, if some of them are designed very well and they really meet the needs of the neighborhoods and of the families, we're hoping it will stimulate others of the same type to go in in this community. Another thing that's happened, you may have read about, is that the legislature recently passed something called climate friendly and equitable communities. And that means that there are areas in our community where we've had to make certain changes to comply with efforts to make the city less less reliant on automobiles. And one of the, one of the rules was that if you are within a half a mile of a frequent rate public transit area, you have to remove all parking minimums from construction requirements. Now, because McLaughlin Boulevard has the thirty three bus that goes every fifteen minutes, that's a frequent service public transit. Everything a half a mile on either side of McLaughlin, which on the west side takes you to the river and on the east side takes you to about the elementary school. We no longer have parking minimum requirements for those, for that area. So that has stimulated development of properties that had sat vacant for years. You all know Terry Marsh from your Education Foundation. His family owned a piece of property at the foot of Portland Avenue that sat unused. It had been years ago, a meat market. And then Terry's dad had plans for maybe developing a mixed use building with commercial on the ground floor and housing up above. But the parking requirements made that a project that wouldn't pencil that at all. You'd have to put so much parking there to cover the number of units in the building that you couldn't make money on. Now, those requirements are gone and that property recently sold. And some kind of development will be happening there, as well as on some other properties on that west side of Gladstone. The same rules don't apply to the properties on the east side, you know, down by Safeway and up the ridge. But we do hope that we will see more development, both for the sake of adding more housing here in Gladstone and economic development and improvement of destinations in the community. Places where people want to go, things that are in close proximity to one another so that people are less reliant on their automobiles for their day to day needs and more able to to walk to things that that meet their needs for for social engagement, for just day to day shopping and and other needs like that. So we're cautiously optimistic, I will say, that we are making some strides toward eliminating that affordability issue in our community. And I'll entertain questions that you have. Yes, Gina?
This may be something that's already been explored in some capacity, but I would be really curious as you talk about the affordable housing units that have been built and then filled with people with families who maybe don't have school age children. It would be interesting to look into potential partnerships. There are a lot of nonprofits that exist, I don't know if they're in our area, but that exist that specifically work to help place families who have kids under the age of eighteen into affordable housing units. It'd be interesting to look at potential partnerships with how families get placed into affordable housing. I don't know if that's, I don't know what that looks like or who currently manages any of that, but I.
Do you have access to who the CBOs are in this area that might be there?
Yeah. I mean, I could get, I could get. I know specifically of several organizations that aren't technically in Gladstone. Definitely in Washington County, some that I could get a list of. Yeah.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
When we had that first Housing Needs Analysis Program for the community at the end of two thousand and eighteen that Bob attended and I attended, we had representatives from from organizations that do, I'm going to call it capital A affordable housing, meaning affordable housing that's either designed for certain income levels or subsidized in some manner. When we speak generally about lowercase a affordable housing, that just means things that people can afford to buy regardless of what their income level is, and and that varies no matter who you are. I I look at, I I get the real estate things, I get the feeds, the emails from Zillow, and you see what the prices are doing in Gladstone and understand why it is a struggle for people. But you're right, Metro has made available funding that goes to counties and counties are slow in putting it out there to to get spent for this purpose. But I I think that's a real good suggestion that that if we if we could target it for something that would help us with the need to boost our enrollment as well, that would be a good direction to go in. And if we have any choice in the kind of places that we that we want to draw into this community, that may be a priority for us.
I can, I can put together.
I appreciate that.
Really happy to hear the parking zoning changing or change. And I think that may have happened a while ago and I forgot to, but just when I remember when we did the downtown revitalization planning, that was a hiccup in in any of the plans of things we want to be able to do downtown Gladstone Core to draw more people. You can't develop the downtown unless parking, the parking restrictions were gone and some of our community didn't want to adhere to that, but now we were forced to do that. They didn't, they didn't like the idea of it. They didn't want to have any parking problems. And I mean, we don't see parking problems on Gladstone, I don't, you know, on Portland Avenue, but I think the more our downtown core does become a place that people want to come and be, the the better people will know even Gladstone exists because it's hard to know it exists. Being on the news for attendance helps Gladstone get, you know, recognized too. Because people, you know, like, I live in Gladstone. Well, where's that? You know the Harley Davidson sign?
Like you ever saw.
Yeah, like, so it's, people know Oregon City. I'm like, oh, it's near Oregon City. Oh, they know Oregon City, right? So it's just, it's trying to get our little city on the map, too, sometimes, I think. It's all the things, right? It's not any one thing.
Yeah, for for what it's worth, I also feel like one of the big challenges for our district is that we're in like a childcare desert. So like, you know, if there's any way of enticing either like a private childcare thing that can help support working families or maybe, you know, it's a thought for for the the space that the library is vacating. You know, a community run childcare center would be massive benefit to this community as an enticement for young families. Good for thought.
I I want to say one more thing about, it kind of relates to the facilities and and other things. Some of you back in January, I know Tracy was there, we had the dedication of the new playground. I I want to say one more thing about um uh that kind of relates to the facilities and and other things. Uh some of you back in January, I know Tracy was there. We had the dedication of the new playground at. Meltrum Bar Park. Uh we got some funding uh through ARPA funds and also a a grant through uh Water Environmental Services. That enabled us to put new playground equipment, went through a whole process engaging the community of what they wanted and it went in. And it's been very well used, well, very well received in the community, but. Well, one of the downsides to spending a lot of time is the elementary school is that you get very civic minded students who come up to you and express their ideas. And I was approached by a second grader. Uh that I know and who said. Why did you take down that playground at Meltrum Bar and put in a baby playground? And it's valid feedback from an active boy who really knows what he wants in terms of playground. And uh so I I thought about it and uh and I thought, yeah. The slide we used to have there was much taller than what we had now. And I remember being frightened when my own young grandchildren were on it. Uh but I know this kid has been riding his bike to school and trying to be more independent and all that. So. I thought about it the following week. I saw him at lunch and I said, I said, have you ever been to Selwood Park? They have a pretty good steep slide there. And he says, he says, oh yeah, that's a good one. But he said, but the best Errol Heights, and he mentioned a new park several acres in in central southeast Portland. Uh and so I went there with my grandchildren to see it and saw what. Uh you know, a twelve or fifteen million dollar park looks like in in a city that has that much in accumulated. Um what do they call them? System development charges, you know, which is the funds the developers pay when you build something new. Uh so I thought, well, yeah, we could, we could design parks that that have a little more of those kinds of features. Uh or maybe the school district as part of your renovation, maybe some sometimes something like that will come up. And I was looking at um. Representative Anessa Hartman's Instagram page the other day, and one of her daughter's twelve year old daughter made a comment. We did more parks for teenagers. She's about to become a teenager. And I had just read an article online. About a big park in, I think it was Philadelphia, that created a huge oval shaped. Uh swing set structure. Uh it was like a continuous oval shaped pole on the top with vertical poles and there's like twenty swings all around the edge. And people of all ages are using this swing because you can swing and see each other across from you. And so teenagers, adults. Children with those big round things where you can lie back and look at the skies you're going up are really engaging and and read a great article about how parks are now thinking about. How do you design yourself to meet the needs of all different ages and all different abilities? And we put in a great playground at Meljor Bar, which will meet the needs of families who have older children playing sports. But the younger kids really need something for them, and it was perfect for that. And the community got involved.
Are you, you, but. It sounds like a functional outdoor environment.
But uh, you know. Adults love parks for different reasons than teenagers do and different reasons children do. And I think that. Uh you know, since we all share in outdoor facilities as part of what we do as as leaders in the community. Uh let's keep that in mind and and work together and and be sure to to share that kind of uh a feedback. And input from our community and and see where that takes us. Uh it's exciting. Uh we uh we may not have the budget. To do what they do in some places, but we may do with what we have. Uh you know, for a small school district, the phrase that Bob always uses and I've stolen it several times is that we punch above our weight in a lot of ways. Uh and and as a city, we do as well. Uh we have a bigger percentage of of land devoted to parks than Milwaukee does. Uh and that's a good thing. And so whatever ways we can involve our children, our youth in supporting our parks. And guiding our development, future development of parks, I think is is a wonderful thing to do.
Tracy?
Yes.
Couple more things.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
First of all, you know, I'm on my way out, so I can tell you guys everything you ought to do, right? But I've I've heard a couple of interesting ideas tonight. So just before this meeting. I'm I'm on the Health Sheriff of Oregon Board of Directors. And um. I'm the chair of the Governance Committee. And we received a report tonight about. Um Medicaid as it is expanding uh the role of Medicaid throughout the state. As being one of those roles of helping to facilitate. Um many social issues and social deeds. It's all part of their the larger scale equity stance within the organization. But um. I thought your comment, Jeanie, if you contacted CBOs. About housing. Because in the meeting I was in. CBOs were part of the overall plan for how that, what that would look like in the metro area. Uh Charlie, your comment about um childcare. And if there was a robust childcare system within the community. What an asset that would be. And I'm just wondering if there wouldn't be an opportunity for. This body initially um to get together again. After July first. To have. To have a conversation about. If we were going to. Become the community where families were trying to seek us out to live. What would it need to look like? To do that? What kinds of things ought to be here to do that? And we mentioned a couple of really good ones in this meeting. And my guess is if you took that. The next level up and you said, okay. Those are good ideas. What other ideas? And you went through that whole process. Then you might just come up with some ideas that you could create a different vision. That would be a joint vision between the city and the school district. Probably isn't done anywhere else. It would be a pretty cool thing to do. So anyway, that's my thought for you going forward. Uh just one other thought. What Jeremiah was talking about today with the long range facility plan. Um I have a hundred percent sure it will require a bond measure to do it. A hundred percent sure of that. I am absolutely cognizant. Of what the tax rate is in question. I know. I absolutely know it. In two thousand and six, when the board at that time made the decision. Um to put that bond measure forward. They knew it and there were some very fiscally conservative people on that board. But what they looked at is these places called schools. Within the Gladstone community that over decades, people have made. Significant investments in these places. To protect an asset that they have in the community. The um. With the, with the bond is finally proposed. I am certain. That the board will come up with a conclusion. That it cannot raise the tax rate. They can't raise the tax rate. But we have a a a bond levy that is cycling off in twenty twenty seven. They'll all be gone twenty twenty seven. So it gives the opportunity to replace that with something that has a lower tax rate. And still protects the assets of the community. So I hope to keep that in mind as you're moving forward and that. The school district could need the support when it gets to that point of. Everybody point to the same thing, man, we got to protect this community. Our schools are a tremendous asset in this. And we've got to protect that. So that's my preachy thing for the night.
So would we can reconvene on June thirty?
Sunday, I will be here.
I know it came to me a little bit ago, Bob, that this is your last. City Council. Or joint meeting, but you're welcome to always rock them.
What if our next meeting is at like a putt putt court?
I know.
I I'll I'll just say that over all my years here, I've said this before to city council members. You have the, you have the strongest. Ever had. Across multiple departments within the city. Um and certainly your city administrator, but with the the city council too. You you you're taking this place, taking Gladstone to. Hasn't been able to go to before. Guys want to work. So congrats to all of you.
And I have a similar comment. Um as Jeremiah expected, uh years ago, you could have left at any time in the last eight years. Uh but you stuck around long enough to make sure that you had strong administration at 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 all your schools in the system. We have some new principals that are working out very well, one who escaped from an Estacada district that just yesterday voted down a bond to to approve their buildings. Uh and I bet, I bet Amy's glad she's in Gladstone. Yes, we're glad we have her. Um so uh you know, sometimes timing is everything and it it's, it's good for this district. That um of all the the years that you have put in and the great contributions and creative thinking that you brought here. You've left us in a place, uh left the school district in a place with very strong leadership as well. Uh so uh to have those, they'd be. Coincidental is is great.
Gladstone School District will continue thrive.
It will, but I believe, yes.
Well, and with that, if there's other comments or. It's a great meeting, lots of stuff. Um got a lot of really great stuff from um the Children's Center and. Looking forward to having Jeremiah step in and Bob, we're excited for you. We're sad, we're excited for you. Um the one thing I'll just say super quickly about Bob that I've learned over working with him for seven years is every time I meet with him, I found out something new. Bob is one of the most humble men I've ever met in my entire life because there's so much to him that you don't know because he doesn't. Gloated and he doesn't tell you about it. It was like, yeah, I'm on the sport. It's like, well, write that one down too. So and and. And Bob, you, you will always throw yourself under the bus. For somebody on the board. That that's not quite the way I want to say it, but. Bob will always stand up for for his board, for the people that he believes in, for the, for things he believes in. And I know that, again, you are a very humble man, but um. There's just so much more to you um and the things that you have done for this district and for this city. Um a lot of people don't even know about. Because you don't ever want to, you know. And I can tell you're uncomfortable with me saying this, I know, but but I I appreciate you. We appreciate you and um. Really, you just don't even think about us. Well, you can think about us when you're, when you're, you know, on the night. Anyway, um with that, um we will close down the Gladstone School Board City Council Joint Work Session. Thank you all very much for Wednesday, May twenty second, seven forty two. M.